Fortieth Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Patterson, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Baker. Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hannon.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Valani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Await approval of the agenda. Sorry, false alarm on that.[43.62][43.62](Laughter). Our first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support?
Motion made by Councilmember Hannon with support from Councilmember Valani. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Patterson, please call the roll.
Black.
Here.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hannon.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker. Dean.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Now, let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our first public comment section. You may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or department, you may leave your contact information, please, on a sheet on the table just outside the door. Please refrain from cheering, booing, clapping, or speaking out of turn. You have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart. When you approach the microphone, please tell us your name and city of residence. Do it. Come on in, Charlie.
Good evening to this honorable body. I'm Mike McGinnis, here on behalf of our Berkeley Downtown Development Authority. I want to congratulate the community on a beautiful and festive Holiday Lights Parade and Santa Claus at the gazebo here at City Hall this last weekend. It was really a magical time. And continuing the festivities of Merry Month throughout downtown Berkeley, just want to remind the community about the offerings all month long. The Downtown Development Authority Board, based upon feedback and encouragement from the community, did vote this year to expand the holiday lights and then switch them up, add some more variety and color and expanded installations. That's our plan next year as well. So we're continuing to try and infuse more festive and brightness throughout our beautiful downtown, even in here, yes, indeed. So those are up, of course. We have our beautiful businesses throughout the downtown. We really encourage residents, as you do all year round, to support our local retailers. They are the lifeblood and the heartbeat of our downtown community. And as you know, many of our downtown businesses are owned by Berkeley residents, or there are employees that work there. And of course, they really add character and unique eclectic offerings that draw more visitors, help keep and attract new residents, and it just really is part of why Berkeley is so special. This is a really important month for them in terms of being able to sink or swim as a small business, so we do encourage you to support them. And an opportunity for that is every Thursday prior to the Christmas holiday, so that's December 7th, December 14th, and December 21st, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. There are a number of retailers that are staying open late, but also offering some fun and excitement, so we encourage you to find out more about merry and bright shopping nights. But we also have, the Jolly Trolley is returning, so for family shopping fun, this Saturday, December 9th, from 10:00 to 5:00 p.m., the trolley will run throughout downtown Berkeley, intentionally with a stop at the Candy Cane Lane Craft Show at the Community Center, so that way more community members can enjoy all aspects of this festive Saturday in store. And we also are partnering with the Berkeley Public Library. Santa Claus is returning to our downtown this Sunday, December 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Berkeley Public Library in our downtown. So we want to make sure you knew about those activities, as this is a busy time for all of us, but where you can and when you can, we'd love to have you spend your time and spend your resources and spend your spirit here with us in downtown Berkeley. Bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all the beautiful lights, Michael. I know that's been a, it has been expanded, to your point, and it's just, just so fun when I drive down around town in the evening. It's nice to see that on Coolidge as well as 12 Mile, and our downtown is looking very festive, so thank you. Commissioner Cavell, would you like to come on up and have a chat?
Hey. Also, weren't the skeletons cool?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay.[333.46][333.46](Laughter). Okay, I'm Charlie Cavell, our county commissioner. Do you want to hear the Berkeley-centric stuff and then the laundry lifts of county accomplishments? Or would you like?
Dealer's choice.
Ooh, okay.[349.21][349.21](Laughter). I think we'll start big and then, okay, get more new. Okay, so, how many of you in Berkeley have had your basement flood? Or, okay, well, okay, so, I guess this is like 10 years in the making since 2014, but on Thursday, we will be passing funding to create not only a water hardship fund and some money for Royal Oak Township because they have wooden pipes, but also to provide a pilot program for 100 residents in Berkeley that live at the bottom of hills to get sewage backflow systems installed, thanks to the Water Resource Commissioner. So that was really cool. Another thing is, part of the federal COVID relief money that we've appropriated focused on aging and seniors, we're going to be having shared out chore services grants for Berkeley to be able to expand or enhance its chore services programs. So those are two really cool Berkeley things.
Can I ask you a question about the chore services?
Please, yeah. I was out of stuff, but, so, yeah.
So, are the criteria the same as the CDBG grant monies to be given out? Like, what's, or is it different criteria for those?
Yeah, so thanks to this funding being from ARPA as instead of CDBG, right? So different acronyms, so different rules. The ARPA One has to be spent by the end of 2026, and it will be seed funding for either restarting or expanding and enhancing Berkeley's, well, in other communities, but Berkeley as well, programs. So the goal is that it's not as restrictive as CDBG, because if I, I think I know where you're going, that there's all these rules with CDBG, because it'll be like, you can do chore services for a senior on the first floor of their home, but not the second. Or you can do lawn mowing, but not snow shoveling more than twice a year or something. There's all these weird rules from the feds.
Very much so.
Yeah.
And income criteria, and I think some of the ARPA funds were dispersed via CDBG criteria.
Sure.
So I'm just, not that I'm bitter about that or anything, but just, just making sure that it will be expanded and perhaps more inclusive.
Yeah, and the way we're doing it is so that it'll be seed funding that then will allow the local communities to put their constraints on it that they see fit.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, and I mean, just to run through the list, we're putting $13 million more dollars into our Affordable or Attainable Housing Trust Fund, right? So when we think about housing affordability and aging in place, just countywide and statewide and nationwide, it's a hard thing to do in terms of attracting talent, retaining talent, helping growing families, helping people age in place. Houses are just unaffordable, and so we need to do something about that. So this is our effort to do that. Second, we, this is something that actually I spent a year working on, this is, I did the Housing Trust Fund, as a champion of the Housing Trust Fund too, but the medical debt thing, we just did in October. So in Oakland County, over the next, ideally, six months or less, people who have medical debt in arrears, right, so if you're like two and a half months behind on your bill or longer, we're going to erase your medical debt, and you don't have to apply, so just wait for a letter to come in the mail that says, "We bought your debt and erased it." And also, something cool for Berkeley, is there's a grant program that we'll be appropriating funding for on Thursday to work with our CMH, OCHN, so Community Mental Health Agency, Oakland Community Health Network, to give them $1 million to help fund starting co-responder programs, so social workers that would co respond with police to mental health calls, because if you listen to our sheriff, 47% of all people in Oakland County jail are people with diagnosed mental health concerns. But then also, a lot of what the policing that happens in Oakland County is related to intimate partner violence, related to drug and alcohol abuse, related to mental health issues or diseases of despair. So having someone that's specifically trained, like a social worker, in how to deal with that is proven to be better. So we're trying to make sure that that becomes a thing. So if Berkeley's interested in that, we'd love to try and connect y'all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
A more compassionate approach, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. There you go.
Council, any questions?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's all right.
Great.
Mayor Pro Tem Gavin.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. Just real quick, the pilot program from WRC, you know, in conjunction certainly with our Communications Director, how are families going to kind of learn about this? You know, will the point person contact application process go through WRC? How's that going to work?
Yeah, so one way people can learn about it is paying attention to their local government.
How about that?
Uh, oh, but also, yeah, through WRC and also the United Way, so you can call 211 and then be connected. WRC also through its, this doesn't matter to you, never mind. Well, you might care, because, but the GWK RTB system, right? So they're like local comms people. But yeah, WRC.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, good luck in that.
Anyone here that, oh, sorry. Were you motioning me?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
We're in the process right now of rolling out a communications plan for that. It was a little, we weren't quite ready to kind of pop the top on that particular news, but very happy to be selected for this. We should be getting materials from WRC on the 7th. We'll incorporate that in the local materials that we have, and then we'll be doing a door-to-door lit drop on this program for, on all the houses in the pilot project area. So if you are eligible for this, it goes geographically. There's a small fee that'll cover the verifications of the home, but yeah, we were really excited to roll this out, come first with the year.
Great, thank you. Anyone here that has a question or a comment for Commissioner Cavell?
Okay. Cool.
Thank you so much, Charlie. Appreciate it. Any other public comments?
Mike McGinnis again, on behalf of the DDA. I was remiss in not mentioning, this year, a new initiative is Elf on a Store Shelf, where we have dozens of elves that are scampering through our dining and shopping establishments all throughout the downtown, so we encourage families to check them out, check them out, of course, on social media, but even more enjoyably, visit them in person. So when I was giving you the rundown of Merry Month, Merryment, I missed the newest bell and whistle, which is our merry elves have had some reinforcements this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hello there. My name's Pat Maslowsky. I live at Berkeley. I live on Kipling at 11 Mile, close to the Columbia Project, so that's what I wanted to talk about tonight, and so I've just written a few words, so I'm just going to read off of that.
Sure.
My thought is like this tonight. The city has, in my opinion, two core values that have been a large part of the character and community of this city. I've lived in this city my whole life. I've raised my family here, and these values are that we are a town whose motto is "We Care," right? And we're also considered basically a bedroom community, where families have built their lives around and live close to their work areas. We're a city who raised families, where multiple generations have stayed, because the city cares about each other and the benefits of the services that make Berkeley a great hometown. So of course, we have rentals and senior apartments that support a multitude of living needs, and a healthy community, you know, needs all these different kinds of lifestyles, living styles. But this project that we're going to be talking about probably in January has many issues that disturb me, so I just wanted to voice my opinion at this month and maybe next month. So there were two, two points that I just wanted to bring up that concerned me the most. The first is that bridge that we have heard about. In my opinion, it doesn't fit the neighborhood aesthetic of what I believe our master plan had a vision for our future, and the site plan calls for four units within this bridge, which seems like it's claiming land space in an area that is over a road, which is not taxed as living space, as I understand this. Probably be clarified on January. But in regards to ordinances, I am aware that Berkeley doesn't hold an ordinance to air rights. But it will also cut off the western sunlight to lease the first homes in that street, and it just feels so wrong to me for them to be denied the evening sun. It doesn't display the character of our community at all. It shrouds the street and the homes it surrounds, especially in that first block. We are not what Royal Oak is becoming or what Birmingham already is. We have our own individuality, which does not include a monstrosity as a bridge that goes nowhere. This perceived gateway looks like it is not what this city is looking for, in my opinion. It feels very West Coast, like LA-ish. It just doesn't look right to me. Secondly, the plan shows this huge structure, and it only has one-bedroom units with a possible retail space on the first floor. I know we will all be talking about that. But in my opinion, it should have a mix of one, two, or three-bedroom units, so perhaps families could move in. So who is the perceived population that the developer is looking for? Professionals up the road would be considered, I just have two more sentences. Professionals up the road who would be considered transient as their careers in pockets grow and they leave the city? Or are you marketing to a senior population who want to stay in place and downsize? But what I'm heard is the rent is going to be, you know, astronomical, 1,800?
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ms. Patterson, have you received any communication to be added to the record this evening?
Excuse me, yes, Madam Mayor. Joel Ulfarts asked, "Can process-related ordinances to make things more streamlined for moving plans through the system be prioritized over zoning map changes and site-based design?"
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, I'm closing public comments. Ms. Patterson, will you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Item one, Approval of the Minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, November 20th, 2023, and the 40th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, November 20th, 2023. Item two, Ordinance Number O-1223. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Chapter 66, Article 2, Library Board of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances. Item three, Ordinance Number O-1323. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Article 7, Construction-Demolition Site Standards, Sections 106 through 303 and 106 through 304 of Chapter 106, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, to modify the standards for construction-demolition sites and to prescribe a penalty for violations. Item four, Ordinance Number O-1423. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to add new Article 8 Parklets to Chapter 106, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places of the Berkeley City Code to allow greater variety of outdoor service options to Berkeley Food Service Establishments of the Berkeley City Code by authorizing and regulating conversion and use of underutilized on-street parking spaces. Item number five, Ordinance Number O-1523. Matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to add new Article 18 Retail Pet Store to Chapter 30 Businesses of the Berkeley City Code to require an existing retail pet store to obtain an annual license from the city, to prescribe license requirements and conditions, and to repeal Article 17 Retail Dog and Cat Sales Temporary Moratorium of Chapter 30 of the Berkeley City Code.
Well done. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gavin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Valani. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Patterson, please call the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Patterson, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Item one, Recognizations Presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, Ms. Patterson, please read item number two on tonight's agenda.
Item two, Presentation. Matter of receiving a presentation by artist Daniel Cascardo regarding artwork he created with resident input during the Street Art Festival this past summer. The artwork will be displayed in City Hall.
Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening all. Last year, with the, with the, at the Street Art Festival, Mr. Cascardo, with input from the entire community, made a beautiful painting that ended up at the library, much to the jealousy of everyone at City Hall. So this year, we are looking to rectify that grave mistake and get a beautiful piece of artwork of our own, created in the same fashion. So thankfully, the chamber was quick and happy to oblige, and you're joined this evening by Chamber Director, as well as Board President, and Mr. Cascardo himself.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Who would like to? Perfect.
Do you want me to stand here?
Yes, please.
Okay, my name is Daniel Cascardo. I'm a local artist. I reside in Huntington Woods. So this is the painting that we did at this year's Berkeley Street Art Fest. The premise is, I'm probably the only artist alive that lets people touch his work.[1268.13][1268.13](Laughter). So I create a black and white line painting with images that represent whatever I'm working, whoever I'm working with, and this one, being the Street Art Fest, there's depiction of somebody creating chalk drawing on the ground and Berkeley Bears. My daughters went to Berkeley High School, so I have a, you know, soft spot in my heart for them. So these images were done in black and white, and then at the Street Art Fest, people were invited to add color patterns and shapes to the design.
Can we turn that just a little bit, please?
Actually, yeah. Just, I'm thinking about where the shoulders are. Yeah. Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
It was very well received. I don't know how many people actually participated, probably, I'd say 100.
Wow.
During, during the Saturday that we were out there. The news, it was on the news, so it got a lot of attention for Berkeley. And like you said, that the first one we did last year is at the library. This one, I wanted to highlight the, the Street Art Fest specifically, so there it is.
It's beautiful.
Any final questions? Yeah. And Darlene and Tim were part of it, and they left their mark on there somewhere.
Oh, that's so nice.
Probably a swirl somewhere.
Yes, of course.
I think, I think you did this.[1363.13][1363.13](Laughter). Photographic memory, yeah.
That's great. Any comment from council?
I just, thank you for this. The more I look at, the more I see the details, so I appreciate it. I can't wait to look at it closer.
Thank you. And I do have a studio that I just opened on 11 Mile, so just in the old park, yes.
Fun.
So hopefully I'll have people there one day.
Well, thank you so much for bringing this interactive piece, so that we have something beautiful at City Hall, and I just think it really has much more meaning because people participated, you know, residents and/or if someone was visiting.
Right, and hopefully they'll come and see where it is.
Yeah.
And recognize what they were.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Darlene and Tim, did you want to add anything? Okay, thank you. We really appreciate that. It's one of the fun parts of, yes.[1421.01][1421.01](Applause).
One quick question?
Yes.
Um, this is maybe for Mr. Baumgartner, but where in City Hall are we going to be hanging this?
So if you can kind of picture walking into the front of our building there, it's a little bit of a, I don't want to say drab, but it's very beige. So this, we envision to be in the hallway when people come in, is a nice pop of color for that hallway. Everything that we can do to reinforce the fact that, yes, you've entered somewhere that's wonderful, that's community sourced, just like the painting itself.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Okay. When is it going to be, like, is it staying here now, or does it leave, I think it's here? Okay, perfect.
We looked at having it hung this week. So Facilities Manager Brown is already picking out a space and prepping the, a nice spot under the lights to really show off the colors.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Ms. Patterson, please read, read item number three on tonight's agenda.
Item three, Ordinance Number O-1623. Matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Section 126-7 Installation in Section 126-74 Supervision of Connection in Chapter 126 Utilities of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to update the policies and inspection procedures for sewer connections.
Is there a motion to approve O-1623?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Hannon.
I defer to the director.
Ms. Kapalansky.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is another one of the cleanup items that I've been routinely appearing before you to get taken care of, so there was some ambiguity between the building code and our own ordinances of who gets to inspect utility connections when those are redone. This is to clarify that that would be under the discretion of the DPW Director, and there will be a handout that's going to go along with this, that we'll hand out to all of our contractors to make sure that they're clear as well, but this is really just a cleanup item that we worked on in conjunction with Mr. Steren.
Thank you. Anyone here would like to comment on this ordinance rewrite, council? Okay, well, that was easy. Ms. Patterson, will you please call the roll on O-1623?
Hannon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Ordinance O-1623 has passed. Well, I think we're at Communications now. Wow. Who goes first?
Councilmember Patterson.
Oh, thank you. The Planning Commission next meeting will be Tuesday, December the 19th, at 7:00 p.m. here in Chambers. The Beautification Advisory Board is selling luminaires at the library for the winter solstice. You can get six of them for $5. If you don't have cash, you can use your card at the library, but they will charge you a processing fee, but $5 will get you six of those. Those are to be placed at your sidewalk, December 21st, in celebration of the winter solstice, so they're looking excited forward to that. I also want to thank Cindy Coon, everyone who helped make the light parade, Holiday Light Parade, a success this year, junior women, DPW Public Safety, and all of the volunteers, and Santa himself. So thank you for allowing us to be part of that, and it was a great celebration.
Thank you. Councilmember Valani?
All right, short and sweet over here from the Berkeley Chamber. Tomorrow, Tuesday, the 5th, is the Chamber Holiday Party at Republica, so go to their website to register. The January Chamber Chat is going to be Friday, January 19th, can you believe it? We're already talking about 2024, at Little Lou's Hot Chicken, so it's 8:30 to 9:30 in the morning. Registration is not required, all are welcome. And looking even further out to February, on Friday, February 16th, is the February Chamber Chat at Avenue Group Real Estate on 12 Mile Road in Berkeley, 8:30 to 9:30 a.m. as well. Once again, registration is not required, and all are welcome to attend. And that is all I have from the Chamber, from comments.
Thank you.
And also, just want to echo Councilmember Patterson's comments about the parade. It was lovely, and I won't repeat everything, but ditto.
Mayor Pro Tem Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. So for Parks and Rec, a couple registration opportunities. You can register for vacation camps at recreation.berkleymish.org, and also, some winter programming as well is available for registration. So thanks to everyone who came out for the Grinch Night on Friday. The Parks and Rec Department asks that we pass along happy holidays to everyone, and then the next meeting will be December 14th at 7:00 p.m. at the Community Center. And for the Library Board, the next meeting will be Wednesday, January 17th at 7:00 p.m., and I will also, for brevity's sake, say ditto, so thank you to everyone.
The perks of going first.
You just did it so well. Councilmember Hannon?
Yes, with the Tree Board, the city's tree vendor is still waiting on trees, so they've finished planting this year's street trees east of Coolidge, but once the trees come in, they'll finish planting on west of Coolidge. We're expecting that in the next week or two. And then the Tree Board's next meeting is in January. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, they've had no meetings since we met last, and no cases to hear in December. Uh, and then finally, I've created an interactive holiday decoration map. So if you'd like to see which neighborhoods have the best decorations to check out, or if you want to add your own decorations, you can, uh, go to bit.ly, uh, slash BerkeleyHoliday2023. That's B-I-T dot L-Y slash BerkeleyHoliday2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, good news is that the Citizen Engagement Advisory Committee and the Technology Advisory Committee will be coming back, proud to be a liaison, council liaison to those committees. So we'll be meeting with, uh, Mr. Lisca and Ms. Flora on Wednesday to talk about what that's going to look like. So we are looking forward to that, uh, especially regarding the technology, because I have four teenagers who I'm always trying to get off of their technology. So I appreciate the irony of now being a liaison to the Technology Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, not much this evening, Mayor. Uh, just want to say, uh, reflects Councilmember Patterson's comments on the parade, it was a great time. Uh, had the pleasure of walking to, uh, Berkeley Steelers, uh, my family and I. We had a wonderful time throwing candy out and seeing neighbors and friends and celebrating the Steelers', uh, Super Bowl victory this year at their, uh, their league championship. Um, but it was well put together, it was
Steelers.
Go Steelers. Um, but also, it was well put together, and I want to really thank DPW. Um, I know we have put them through the wringer, if anyone's read my, uh, entry in the, uh, latest newsletter, you'll know that we made some changes to the leaf collection program that didn't go as well as we had hoped. Uh, and a lot of that fell onto our DPW staff and crew, uh, who have worked tirelessly to keep up with, uh, the leaves, uh, including this week, when they also were playing double duty as Santa's little helpers as well. Uh, so thank you to them, uh, thank you for everyone that makes this happen. Uh, and it really is a great time to come together and celebrate our community.
Thank you. Mr. Christ?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have nothing this evening.
Okay. So on this past Friday, I had the pleasure, along with Councilmembers, uh, Henon, Patterson, and Valani, of attending the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance Annual Meeting and Sponsor Breakfast. If you're not familiar with Youth Assistance, they truly, truly are an incredible organization. This was the, the giant meeting, so all the communities were there. But our, our own Berkeley Youth Assistance does so much that you probably don't see or hear about. They provide mentors to those who want to mentor, short-term counseling, um, camperships, and much more to families in our community. They really are, I don't know, boots-on-the-ground first responders to families that are, I'm not gonna say necessarily in crisis, but that have some kind of need. They are a very do-good organization, and it was really nice to be in that meeting and seeing all the, all the communities, uh, having their representation for youth assistance. I know we've heard all the liaison reports tonight, and I, um, just finished juggling those around for the fortieth council. And I don't know if people are aware or not, but in addition to council responsibilities, each council member has a liaison appointment, and so that requires, um, even more of their volunteerism to our community. Um, you attend the meetings of whatever committee you liaise to. And it just, to me, it exemplifies not only their commitment, but council's passion for the city. So thank all of you for, um, taking those assignments seriously and, um, and embracing them. I really appreciate it. Holiday lights, yep, it's all been said. But I'm just gonna add that it is truly one of my favorite things to do as mayor, besides marrying people, is to give Santa the key to the city. And really, when I look out and I see the, all the smiling faces of the children and the families, it's, it's a definitely a feel-good, uh, night in Berkeley. And then finally, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Henon for renewing his Master Citizen Planner credentials from Michigan State University. This is a step beyond even what the city requires of planning commissioners and the ZBA. So well done and congratulations, Councilmember Henon. And with, yes. It truly takes a lot of work, I mean, it's, you know, so it's good that we have him as our go-to for all those kinds of questions. And with that, I would
Happy birthday, Mayor Dean.
Oh, thank you. Thirty-nine and holding, and if you believe that, I, I should say, I'm a little bit disturbed, anyway. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion made by Councilmember Patterson, supported by Councilmember Valani. Ms. Patterson, will you please call the roll?
Valani?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Mayor Dean?
Yes. The Monday, December fourth, 2023, meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.